Good morning, everyone. Thank you for being here. But before we start this meeting, I just want to make sure if you weren't here earlier in our budget workshop meeting, Trust Chair Sullivan is here, but he had to step out real quick to attend a work matter. So he'd asked me to take his place for a while. So if you see him step back in and me getting, you know, switching seats, you know why? Thank you. Thank you for your patience. Good morning again. This is a regular meeting of the Lone Star College System Board of Trustees. It's now come to order at 10:30 a.m. If you could please stand with me for the pledge of allegiance. All right. Next item was, I'm just gonna do a roll call real quick, just to make sure that we do have corn, which we do. But I'll start with trustee Wilson, trustee Broussard, trustee Stoma.
I'm here.
Trustee Mesa.
Present.
Trustee Mario.
Present.
Trustee vote. Trustee Kane.
Here.
And myself. Perfect. Thank you. Chancellor Castillo, has the notice of this meeting been posted?
Yes, Madam Chair, I certify that the posting has been done so in accordance with the law.
Thank you, sir. Next item is public comment. Ms. Barnett, do we have anyone signed up for public comment?
Yes, we have one public speaker, Dr. John Bergdoff.
Dr. Bergdoff, please step.
Hello.
Hello, good morning.
Morning. Good morning, everyone. I am Dr. John Bergdoff, President of the American Federation of Teachers at Lone Star College. In September of 2005, the most powerful hurricane ever recorded in the Gulf of Mexico was taking a direct path towards Houston. Hurricane Rita intensified to category five with top winds of 177 miles an hour, and she was headed straight towards Galveston Bay. Although she veered away from Houston at the last hour, the effects in the Golden Triangle were devastating. Between horrendous wind, torrential rain, and astronomical storm surge, Rita was bad. As bad as Rita was for folks to the east of us, the worst problem for Houston was that we overreacted. Rather than taking shelter, tens of thousands of people outside of storm surge risk areas took to the freeways, bringing I-45 to a complete standstill all the way to Dallas. People died of heat stroke under perfectly clear skies. Why am I recalling this sad story today? Since the start of the year, higher education has been experiencing a category five hurricane in the form of government actions. There are many specific examples I could bring up, but today I want to recall three. The lawsuit from the Trump Department of Justice ending in-state tuition for undocumented students, Senate Bill 37 shuttering faculty senates, adding new burdens to boards of trustees, and creating a new bureaucracy in Austin, and Senate Bill 2615 restricting remote work for higher education employees. All of these actions and others are very bad for Lone Star College, for our students, and for our employees. My biggest fear is that the effect can be made worse if our people overreact. The in-district ruling, for example, does not apply to foreign students on F-1 visas or to students registered under deferred action for childhood arrivals with valid work permits. DACA students and foreign students with visas, as well as several other categories of students, are still eligible for in-district tuition if they meet residency requirements. I absolutely understand the threat that many of these students feel, but they don't need to make decisions based on incorrect information about tuition, potentially making their future prospects even worse. SB 37 in early drafts included restrictions on the content that faculty teach. These provisions were stripped out before the bill passed. I've been getting calls from faculty asking if they should quit teaching about unpopular topics like slavery or segregation, or from showing pictures of Renaissance art, or discussing the human reproductive system in biology or nursing classes. I assure them that they absolutely do not have to do so, and that, in fact, they should not back away from the important information they teach. However, I worry that others will silently overcomply with what they think the law says and deprive students of the education they need. SB 2615 puts limits on remote work for higher education employees, but does not end it. Lone Star's flexible work program, which allows for some days working from home, but not complete remote work, and which includes accountability measures to assure productivity, should largely pass muster, at least for non-teaching staff. Some alterations may be necessary, but pulling back on the program would be a needless overreaction that would harm our ability to attract and keep good talent. Rita may have been less deadly for Houstonians if public officials had given out clearer guidance. I believe, working together, you on the board, the administration, the union, and other interested groups can send out the best possible information so that Lone Star follows the law, but our people don't needlessly hurt our students and ourselves by overreacting. Thank you so much for your kind attention.
Thank you, sir. Ms. Barnett, do we have anyone else signed up?
We do not. We do. Thank you.
Okay. Since we have no other speakers, we'll move on to the approval of the minutes. So colleagues, if you had the opportunity to review the minutes, it's now time to approve them. So approve the minutes of the June 5, 2025 budget workshop meeting and the June 5, 2025 regular meeting. Are there any corrections to the meetings? See if you're able to review them ahead of time? If no corrections, do I hear a motion to approve the minutes? Do we hear a second?
Second.
Okay. There's a motion in the second. Can I hear an a's or yes?
Yes.
Okay. And any nays? All right. The motion passes. Thank you. Next item is the special reports and announcements. Chancellor?
Yes, thank you, Madam Chair. Let's start with the event. So want to start by highlighting Dr. Vien was recently recognized, I think it was about a week ago, on July 23rd, by the Houston's Business Journal for the best CFOs essentially in the greater Houston area. And it was a great event. And I know several board members were there, so I look forward to your comments on that. We had three tables there, actually. It was really nice. Your colleagues were there, a lot of your team members were there. It was a really nice event, and it showcased, and it was also a big deal because it was the inaugural one. So wanted to publicly recognize Dr. Vien again. When one of our employees wins, we all win. And so we're very proud of you. Would you like to say a few words, Dr. Vien? Reenact your speech from that day? Okay. All right. All right, ma'am. Fall 2025 convocation is on August 19th, from 8:30 to 11:30 at the Woodlands Waterway Marriott. And we're gonna do things a little bit differently this year. So if you've been before and you're like, been there, done that, it's a new show. So we'll see what the ratings say. But we're gonna at least try something new. So if you've been before, and it is optional, I want to be very clear about that, it is optional. As I wrote in the email, I don't want anyone convocating against their will. So only come if you are willing. The start of the fall 2025 term is on August 25, on August 25th. And so we're gonna start the fall term. And then now I want to move to sort of really the main point that I wanted to make today. And I'm gonna start first with, and we're gonna talk about this later when, with regards to action item number 28, but we have a representative from, that represents Apple in the audience, and I want to recognize him, Mr. Collins is back there, yes. And so we're forming a partnership with Foxconn and indirectly with Apple to, as you guys have read, probably you saw it recently, is yesterday, there is an announcement that we're gonna have several millions of dollars of investment coming right here to our Fallbrook area in North Harris County. And one of the things that I've asked are, hopefully, new partners in Foxconn and Apple, Nvidia and Samsung and those folks is, you know, all we ask in return is that you hire our students. That's really sort of the only thing that we have to ask of you. We want to be good neighbors. We want to be good partners. But we would like for you to offer one of those 25, most of those 2,500 new jobs to our students here at Lone Star. And so part of what I told you, Mr. Collins, is that at this institution, we believe in the work product that we put out. And I wouldn't ask Apple or Foxconn or anyone else to hire our students if I'm not willing to do it myself. And so I want to recognize, we have five students right now that work in the chancellor's office, and I'm gonna go one by one with them and ask them to stand and just talk a little bit about them. I promised them that they would not have to come and give speeches. So let's start with Marie Ange. So Marie is originally from Cameroon and a proud first-generation college student studying abroad, supported by hardworking parents. She's pursuing a computer science degree at Lone Star College with a growing interest in cybersecurity and AI, planning to graduate by 2029. She aims to build a career protecting systems and communities from digital threats. She enjoys modeling, spending time with loved ones, thoughtful conversations, and fun coding. So there you go, Apple. Evady moved from Angola to the United States in August 2024 and began studies at Lone Star College that fall. She's pursuing an engineering, I'm sorry, he's pursuing engineering, I get nervous too, believe it or not. He's pursuing an engineering degree with plans to transfer to Texas A&amp;M for a bachelor's in petroleum engineering. And you're expecting to graduate in spring of 2026. You aspire to work in the offshore in the oil industry, improve product production efficiency, and travel the world. You enjoy researching global and environmental topics online and playing video games. What type of video games? No, I'm just kidding. I promised no one would have to speak. Thank you so much, Evady. So Jenny is from Vietnam, and she moved to the United States eight months ago, actually, with a background in hospitality management. She's pursuing an associate of business at Lone Star College University Park. She plans to transfer to University of Houston and graduate in summer of 2028. She aims to become a business consultant with a focus on human resources and organizational development. So thank you. Brianna earned both a high school diploma and an associate of science degree through high school, high, and Lone Star College, pursuing a BS in biology with a cell and molecular biology concentration. I can barely pronounce that, so good for you. With a minor in chemistry and psychology at Texas A&amp;M Corpus Christi, you're graduating in December of 2025. She aims to become a child life specialist to support children and families in hospital settings. She actively is involved in volunteering with children, church leadership, and enjoys reading. Thank you, Brianna. Richard, last but not least, is from Canada with a background as a full-stack software engineer, currently pursuing an associate in business administration at Lone Star College University Park. He aspires to start a software business and sees the degree as a stepping stone towards entrepreneurial and career goals. He enjoys coding, music writing, and video game, and video gaming in free time. Thank you, Richard. And so to my friends at Apple, I practice what I preach, and I expect my partners to do the same. All right. So next but not least, I want to introduce new president of LSC Online. Come on down, Dr. Morales. So let me tell you a little bit about Dr. Morales, because he tends to be very humble, and I like to brag. So inaugural president of LSC Online, he's the founding president of TCC Connect, which is in Tarrant County, which serves over 30,000 students. He has 30 years of experience teaching over 9,000 students in biologically, science, education, and instructional design. He is the author of 50, more than 50 publications, 125 presentations, and active peer reviewer across multiple continents, leads strategic evidence-based initiatives and instructional technology in distance education, directed a college-wide shift to virtual learning during COVID-19, enhancing support and retention. He serves on the NCSARA, AACCC, HETS, and others, recognized as a Frye and Millennium Leadership Fellow. Here you have him, Dr. Morales, our inaugural president of LSC Online.
Thank you. Good morning, Chancellor Castillo, Board Vice Chair Saldivar, and members of the board. Thank you, Chancellor Castillo, for that warm introduction. I am truly honored and excited to join Lone Star College as the inaugural president of LSC Online campus. And I look forward to working with all of you to continue building a strong and innovative and supportive environment for both our students as well as faculty. And of course, together we will embrace the opportunities ahead and ensure that our college remains a leader in online education. I am excited to learn from you, collaborate with you, and contribute to our shared mission of student success. So thank you again for the opportunity.
Welcome. Colleagues, any, any comments? Thank you, sir. Welcome.
Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Morales. Next is our new vice chancellor of marketing and communications. That's Dr. Prince. Come on down, Dr. Prince. All right. So Dr. Prince has more than 30 years of experience in strategic planning, media relations, marketing, journalism, and crisis communications. She began her career in public relations in the Marine Corps as a writer, photographer, and editor. She began her career in higher education at Laredo Community College in 2005. She's been at Lone Star since 2018, serving in various roles, including the executive director of public relations and later chief strategist at North Harris. She holds a doctor of higher education administration from Texas Tech University, and she's been the interim for the last eight months. So we just knocked off the interim title, and now she's the vice chancellor of marketing and communications, Dr. Prince.
Thank you. Good morning, Madam Vice Chair, board members, Chancellor Castillo, and the rest of the faculty, staff, and administration who are here. It's a truly an honor and a privilege to, to be entrusted with this role. It's very exciting to work at a place like Lone Star College System, where everyone from the board to the chancellor to the leadership team works together collaboratively to be able to really transform the lives of our students, their families, and our communities. And it was very easy for me to say yes to being in a role where I get to work with all of this team. It's so rewarding to be a part of this, and I'm excited for the work ahead and grateful for the opportunity. Thank you very much.
All right. And the last introduction, I promise, is our new associate vice chancellor of mental health and wellness, as well as our new chief mental health officer. So Dr. Stokes, come on down. She is the inaugural associate vice chancellor in that position. She has 27 years of clinical experience and nearly 20 years in college mental health leadership. She's known for her collaborative, equitable, and innovative approach to student mental health, aligning with Lone Star College's mission. She was previously at Sam Houston State University, led key wellness initiatives, including partnerships with the Jedd Foundation and Steve Fund. Her background includes psychiatric settings, work in psychiatric settings, sorry, trauma intervention programs, and community mental health. She holds a doctorate in clinical psychology from Roosevelt University and is a proud mother of three daughters. And so I really want to highlight this part of it. Dr. Stokes is a clinician, right? And so she's a mental health doctor. And she has been hired to lead what we hope to be our new internal mental health division for our students and our employees. And so.
Thank you to the vice chair, chancellor, and to the board members. I am thrilled to be here. I have had such a warm welcome from so many of you. I've been able to meet with people from all levels of leadership, as well as our frontline staff. I was sharing with Dr. Vien that as soon as I think I know how big Lone Star is, it gets bigger, and then it gets bigger. And so I'm still trying to wrap my head around the magnitude of the system. But people have been very supportive, enthusiastic. I've spoken with folks who have shown commitment, in addition to the willingness to be uncomfortable, if it means that we can create mental health programming for our students and give good outcomes to them. And so I appreciate everyone's enthusiasm as I continue to kind of learn the system and figure out how we can move forward. I can say that this system has good bones. When I left my former institution, someone said to me on the last day at my send-off, aren't you glad you're getting away from the chaos? And I said, well, I'm not leaving higher education, so I'm not really getting away from the chaos. I'm kind of getting new chaos. But the difference here at Lone Star is that there's heart and there's energy behind the work. I've seen a real dedication from folks to want to really improve these outcomes for our students, and I'm excited to be a part of building together. Thank you.
That concludes my report, Madam Chair. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next item is board members. Trustees, do you have any special reports or announcements? No? Trustee Kane?
Couple of items. I had the pleasure of attending the Houston Business Journal's recognition of outstanding CFOs in this area, and Dr. Vien, congratulations once again for being honored. That was a very nice, very nice day. Also had a chance to, this week, attend the dedication of a firefighter training facility at Kingwood College, Dr. Gonzalez, honoring a former firefighter, Gary Lee Stavey, who was tragically killed in a, in a, putting out a fire. And it was just a great occasion. His, his parents set up an endowment, which many firefighters have used in the way of a scholarship. And so a number of those firefighters were on hand. It was a, it was a wonderful occasion.
Thank you. Trustee Broussard?
Yes. I had the pleasure of attending Dr. Gonzalez and Chair Sullivan's community event at Kingwood, Lone Star College, Kingwood. It was a State of the Union event with a lovely luncheon, and it was just spectacular. I thoroughly enjoyed it. Chair Sullivan and I discussed how nice, and so did trustee Wilson, who was also there, how nice it would be for, you know, every institution to have such an event as far as the State of the Union. Anyway, I thoroughly enjoyed it. Thank you so much.
Trustee Wilson?
I've been moving and shaking all over, so. So first with the, the award ceremony to recognize our own very, Dr. Vien, I thought that was awesome. And to see how many people that we had actually come out and celebrate her, I believe like support is actually action. And I, I do believe you felt the action and the love and the support from the institution. And not only that, Lone Star was like recognized, you know what I'm saying? And so it was just good to see. We had 30 people there, as the chancellor mentioned, and it was like, it was really nice. And so I really appreciate that and the invite. I also attended the state of Kingwood with Dr. Gonzalez and Chair Sullivan, and it was really, really good to see all the information and the growth that they're doing out there in Kingwood. And, and I'm excited for the growth, you know, because we need it, you know? And, and I appreciate everybody putting their time in, in the faculty and staff to make it happen, because I know it's a lot that goes behind it, but you all did an awesome job, and I appreciate the information. I also attended a long wood, former trustee Pierce. We attended the LSC Tomb Ball Special Olympics golf tournament that they had at Topgolf. Everybody who was a part of, it was full. They had the whole bottom part of Topgolf blocked off for the tournament. Everybody that attended that's in that Life Skills program received an, they placed first, second, or third. So I thought it was really amazing. They really did a good job. They really know what they're doing. And so I was just excited for the, you know, because that just shows, we just don't focus on one type. We focus on everybody. And so I really appreciated the invite. And I know he's not here, but the coach of the team, he's also the coach of the basketball team for Life Skills Tomb Ball. And he was just telling me, and former trustee Pierce, that they have the USA Special Olympics team. And so he went out, out of 40 coaches to be, to see if he could be the head coach. And we had three students try out. They didn't make it, but he made it out of 40 coaches to be the USA Special Olympics team that they're gonna be doing in, in summer. That's a big to-do, you know? And I took pride in that because I'm like, wait, that's, 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 that's more recognition for Lone Star. So people would know who we are, let them know we have good people. And we have strong people. We have people that are trying to make a difference in our kids' lives. So I appreciated that. I also attended, I know, right? I also attended the Kingwood Fire Training Pavilion dedication for Mr. Stavey. And to see that his parents entrusted us with an endowment to help firefighters, right, who might be going through a difficult time. And they, and they entrusted us to award scholarships to deserving students. They even had the first student who ever received funding from them, a scholarship from them there. And the one, one who just received this funding from there, they're actually there. Dr. Gonzalez, you did a good job with that event as well. And it was really, really nice to see the plaque that's gonna be put inside of the pavilion. So when they come, when the firefighter cadets come to sit, take their rest, take a break, the, the plaque is there for them to see that, you know, it was made possible by this family. So, you know, it was, it was great to see that. And then I also attended, this is my last one. I also attended the back-to-school job with Dr. Saldivar and Dr. Wright at Fallbrook. And it was like an awesome event. It was so many people, like, it was a lot of people there. And it was just good to be able to help, along with trustee Mario, trustee Mesa, former trustee Pierce, trustee Saldivar, where we all were there. And to see the people and to see the excitement. Hey, you know, snow cones, corn dogs, and popcorn, all the things, concert, everything, backpacks, and every school supplies. It was, it felt good just to get back in the community and help again. So that's my.
Thank you, trustee Wilson. Any other colleagues? Trustee Mesa?
Hello, everyone. Good morning. I'm gonna go in chronological order, and, and the summer's been busy. So as far as my full-time job with the Aldine Independent School District, we did a trip to DC through our program that we have, Aldine Votes. We took 22 young people, so students, graduates from our high schools, to DC, and they got to do the whole tour and see all the monuments and historical events, learn about them that have shaped our country. We got to tour the Supreme Court also, which is a really cool experience. And we actually had some students represent and meet with legislative staff. So we got to meet with the staff of Senator Cornyn, Congresswoman Sylvia Garcia, Congressman Al Green, the District 18 staff, which as we know, the position's vacant currently. And we actually had a special student, her name was Deliria, her name is Deliria Smith, who I don't see here, so I'm not sure if she's gone off to the Marines already, but she attended with us and represented us. We're very proud of her. And so, all that to say is that I'm hopeful that maybe with the program that we have here at our college as far as engaged the electorate program, I'm happy to work with the facilitators of that program to see if we can get some students out to DC sometime. And I'm sure that's already in the works. I'm sure you're, y'all are already way ahead of me on that. But any way I can support and help out, we're super proud of that, and super proud of our Aldine students who I'm trying to ensure that sign up for Lone Star before the classes start soon. So a lot of our Aldine students do end up coming to Lone Star, and I'm just trying to make sure that I help them and ensure that they get the same opportunity that I was given for my school staff and counselors at Spring I S T to come to Lone Star. Secondly, I'm grateful to the college and Chancellor Castillo for entrusting me and sending me to the Naleo Conference. Naleo stands for the National Association of Latino Elected Officials. So I represented the college in Atlanta just a few weeks ago and got to meet with a few people, colleagues of ours in different jurisdictions and positions, so city council members, county commissioners, judges, tax assessors. And so it was a call for me, since I'm relatively new to this thing. And so I got to get a little bit of coaching and mentoring out there and, and do a little bit of elbow rubbing. But it's a really cool experience, and I got to meet other fellow trustees at a few other community colleges. not just in our area, but throughout the country and learn about some of the things that, some of the challenges that they're facing. Attended a really good session such as land use, mental health, other things that are concern our community currently. And so I just want to say thank you again for, for allowing me to go out there and represent the college. And then lastly, also a big shout out to Dr. Wright for his recent event at Fallbrook. I know it was hot and you had your staff out there working six, seven days a week. So we're very proud of, of all the work that they're doing. Also thank you to Dr. Lambert for coming out to our back to school expo at Aldine. And he said he went to all the tables and we had quite a few tables and talked to a lot of Lone Star alum, including myself. And so thank you to our, all of our presidents for the work that y'all are doing right now. I know it's, it's crunch time right now to get all of our students enrolled. So we're very appreciative of all the work that y'all are doing and y'all staff, of course. So thank you for all that and we're hopeful for an amazing semester and year. Thank you so much.
Thank you, trustee Mesa. Trustee Maria? Okay. I just want to take this opportunity and thank Dr. Wright for your back to school event. It was incredibly blessed and awesome. We served, how many students, Dr. Wright? Over 1,100 students, y'all? 1,100 students for our back to school fair. And, you know, we had obviously, you know, their backpacks and school supplies, but we also have like, you know, snow cones, popcorn, live music. It was a very wonderful event. So I want to publicly thank Dr. Wright, all your staff. I know it's, you know, doing events is a lot of work. So I really appreciate that. And also Fallbrook Church for partnering with us and always being open with Lone Star College to be able for us to host events there. So thank you, Fallbrook Church for doing that for us. And Dr. Wright, thank you so much. That was a very, very good and much needed event as well as you could see. Thank you. Now we move to.
Vice Chair, I'm so sorry, am I being recognized? Sorry. I think we may have skipped Dr. Jones's presentation.
Yes. Thank you, ma'am. I was just about to say that. So yes, I went a little bit ahead of myself and so I just want to go back to item B, which is the presentation. So apologies.
Now we'll give you all a minute to have laptops or iPads distributed.
Okay. Well, while they distribute the iPads, Madam Chair, I'll, I'll take a second because I actually forgot to recognize one group of people. I've gotten three or four emails from trustees in the last really two or three weeks commending the office of the chancellor staff and the board liaison. And I've been waiting and I didn't put on any documentation because I knew y'all would stop me. And so this is me doing me. A lot of work goes into these meetings for a lot of the staff in the chancellor's office. It's a weekly labor of love to sort of just set up our meetings. And so I just want to make sure that we publicly recognize them. And another pitch for our students, Mr. Collins, my chief of staff, my executive assistant, and our office manager are all former students of Lone Star College. And so again, we're very proud of them and we're really proud of y'all. Thank you so much for all the work that you do. Miss, Mr. Crawl, see I'm messing up. Ms. Barnett, Brooke, everybody that, Nathaniel, everyone that works on the, on these board meetings, the facilities folks, the OTS folks. It doesn't go unnoticed when our meetings run smoothly and they run smoothly because for two or three days you guys worked so hard. And I personally appreciate it. And I can tell you that the board appreciates it because they've gone out of their way to commend all of y'all. So I wanted to publicly thank y'all. And apparently it worked out perfectly while we did whatever is going on behind me here. So thank you, Chairman Sullivan, for that indulgence. I'm done now. All right.
Thank you. Dr. Jones, please proceed.
Thank you, sir. Good morning, Chancellor and Board of Trustees. Lone Star College has a legacy of excellence and innovation for the future. Continuing that legacy under our chancellor's vision, we have evolved our priorities to ensure that students are better off because of us. Picture our first generation students, starting at LSC, unsure of their future and unsure how to get there, but leaving with a degree, a job in their career, and the skills and confidence to thrive. That's the LSC difference we're amplifying today. Hopefully. Community colleges first opened to expand access to higher education, now called Community College 1.0. Decades later, priorities evolved to emphasize credential completion, or 2.0. And now in recent years, Community College 3.0 was coined by the Aspen Institute to recognize the additional need for post-college success. This includes ensuring that our credentials prepare students for high demand, high wage careers, and ensuring students cross the finish line to employment in those careers. If this rings a bell for you with credentials of value in House Bill 8 and the work of G2 and G5, you are spot on. For LSC, employment readiness, experiential learning, and confidence in our graduates isn't new. However, we continue to deepen, expand, and innovate new ways in which we support family sustaining careers for our students. Many students arrive with financial need as a barrier. Through direct employment and paid internships, we empower them to support themselves and their families, ensuring they can stay and succeed. There are three main ways LSC puts students to work. We employ them directly, as you've heard the chancellor mention this morning, as students and as alumni. We embed real world experience in the curriculum through co-ops, clinicals, and internships. And we offer a variety of career support services. Three of the newest we'll highlight in a few minutes, like the Timber Wolf leaders pictured here. Building on a foundation of access and completion, let's dive into how we're supporting post-college success through direct employment opportunities. Both campus and system offices have found ways to bring students into our teams. Not only is their perspective invaluable in shaping our future, but when we're proud of the graduates we produce, there is no greater compliment than to welcome them back as colleagues. The Financial Aid Department has supported student employment through work-study initiatives, which include VA work-study and 50 state mentor program students this year. $1.8 million towards federal work-study positions system-wide familiarizes students with professional environments and effectively prepares them for successful careers post-graduation. Since 2017, the Office of Legal Affairs and Student Success, or OLS, has proudly employed more than 50 former LSC students. These students have represented every campus across the system, demonstrating the team's strong connection within the LSC community. Chancellor Castillo has carried this practice into the office of the chancellor. So now LSC graduates like Nathaniel and Brooke are an integral part of that office too. OLS has a reputation for seeing the potential in students like Pablo, who grow into exceptional team members through their mentorship. While they are with us, students like Jocelyn from Houston North can get part-time employment providing critical support to other students. Or stay connected over the years, like Stephen Murphy, who started as a student assistant in '05 and became a full-time professor last fall. Sometimes students become future employees because one person makes a special connection. As was the case for Andrea at North Harris. Through our online college, students like Gabriella learn not only hard skills for future careers, but the interpersonal skills that set applicants apart for competitive positions. Clinicals, co-ops, and internships ensure students experience theory and practice as they step into the work environment with the guidance of practitioners and faculty to apply their new skills. These industry partnerships are mutually beneficial, ensuring our courses and programs are responsive to industry demands. In process technology and instrumentation, robust industry partnerships create remarkable opportunities. BP's week-long internship program with LSC Kingwood trains students at its Houston, Homa, and Shreveport facilities, resulting in multiple job offers. Automotive technology students participate in co-op when completing their Level 2 certificate. And when our students impress their employers, like James Don, sometimes we get the double win, as he is now employed by his internship provider and also adjunct faculty with LSC Montgomery. Internships can even place students into the business operations of the college, like OTS and college relations teams who hire student interns to apply their learning in real-world operations in the supportive culture of LSC. Additional career support from campus and system teams include job fairs, career exploration activities, Career Star for online connections with employers, and workshops on interview and resume writing. As we embrace the chancellor's challenge to ensure students are better positioned to thrive, new promising practices have launched. As one LSC, these practices are shared, expanded, and evolving to support the LSC community. Three such programs will be featured, but more are always on the way, benefiting students like Madison, whose role in student services enhances her customer service and organizational skills, preparing her as a future engineer. After launching Falcon Force in '23, LSC SciFair created the Falcon Internship Program in February '24 to place students in paid internships aligned with their career aspirations, but separate from their classes. Successful launch required creating new industry connections with LSC SciFair, now exceeding 150 businesses, and developing industry-specific training to help students compete. Already 172 students have received at least one customized coaching session, and 26 were placed in paid internships. Under the strategic priority to build the campus for career through completion, the Opportunity Hub will launch Micro Internships, a National Association of Colleges and Employers, or NACE, Competencies Aligned Pilot for New Students, Industry Field Trips, and more. Students like Daniela are equipped with project management, customer service, and interpersonal skills she needed to succeed as a congressional intern for Congressman Wesley Hunt and now three-time dean's list at the UH Bauer College of Business. LSC University Park developed a student communications pathway that evolved from their main squad of five student content creators, originally a mix of work-study and volunteer roles, and as of June, a formal paid internship program. The new social media marketing internship at UP is an intentional career-aligned student role developed within UP College Relations, providing paid hands-on experience in campus communications. Interns contribute to campaign strategy, experience, event planning, and internal marketing while developing real-world skills in communications, PR, and digital content. These experiences not only prepare students like Andrea for post-graduation careers, but strengthen their ties to the college. In its third year, Timber Wolf Leaders provides paid hand-on experience for student leaders, fostering professional development and contributing directly to campus initiatives. Notably, two program participants have successfully transferred into roles within college departments, showcasing the direct pipeline to employment. Impacting over 13 departments across campus, more than 12 Timber Wolf leaders have now been integrated into every major division. 100% of these students have not only been retained in the program, but have 100% graduation and transfer rates as well. Peyton shared, "This experience has helped me not only find my voice, but use it with confidence and purpose." These aren't just initiatives. They're transformative proof that LSC students are better off because of us. In a competitive job market, programs like these bridge the gap between education and employment. As the energy around these teams is electric, idea sharing and inter-campus collaborations continue with grassroots innovation leading the way. Knowing our board's dedication to our students, I've compiled the more detailed student stories into a booklet for each of you, which Fatima will share. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Dr. Jones. Before you leave the podium, we'll ask for questions. Any questions? I'll start to my right. Any questions or comments here on this side or the left? Questions, comments? No, no. Thank you. Great job presenting, presenting the information to us. Pardon me. Trustee Maria.
Yeah, yeah, I have to commend you. I'm, I'm, I want to get up and, you know, cheer all the incredible initiatives and projects and students and faculty. You presented extremely well and just go get it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, trustee Maria. Thank you, Dr. Jones. Next we'll move into committee reports from board members. First, let's see, trustees, do we have any special reports or announcements?
I do.
I'm going to start on my left, please. This side? Yes. Okay. None, 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 none. Good. Trustee Stona.
The committee reports, right?
These are special reports or announcements. Then we'll go to committee reports. Okay. Trustee Broussard, trustee Wilson. Okay. Thank you. Okay. Pardon me. Now committee reports. Trustee Stona.
Yes, I want to thank Ms. Bridget Johnson for furnishing her monthly report to the board. And this is for board eyes only. I know she's not here today and I wish her well and a speedy recovery. She's doing an excellent job as well as her team. These reports are important because it allows the board to keep track of what's going on and to be able to ask questions either through the chancellor or through the board liaison. I've also spoken with the chancellor several times and having Ms. Johnson present five or 10 minutes at each board meeting. There are three advantages to doing this. One, it gives the board, again, an opportunity to ask questions. Of course, if there's any proprietary information or questions asked, and those can be deferred to private sessions. But it, it gives visibility also, public transparency to what we're doing. You know, we're going to spend tens of millions of dollars on the transformations of these information systems, tens of million dollars of public money. And they have a right to know where that money's going. So it gives some public transparency to what, what we're doing here. Thirdly, it really helps Ms. Johnson and her team to know that not only does the chancellor have their support, but the board has their support. In my, how'd you say this? 30-plus years of managing programs and projects, I always have a requirement to report to the senior, senior level management, CXO, VPs, et cetera, board members. And that's important. It's important to know that they're behind you. Because any project or program that does not have senior management involvement fails. That's a matter of research. You can look that one up. So I think, I, I believe, my opinion, my professional opinion, to Ms. Ms. Bridget Johnson, and I'm going to call out Ms. Chris Williams. Chris Williams, as you know, is a CIO. She's the person who gets things done. And she's doing an excellent job as well. And the two of them are the right people to lead this endeavor. So I encourage, I encourage them to have time before the board. I encourage them and support them fully. They are the right people for the job. And we need to support them and give them our, you know, whatever support we can in any way to help them move this forward because it's not easy. And, and they've really not done anything just, how shall I say, scoped, scoping before. So, and they all, they're very accomplished folks. But still, every, every project, every program, every transformation is new. And they're going to have issues and they're going to need to address those issues before the board. And we need a good rapport with them. So again, I want to thank them for their work and encourage them to carry on. That's all I have.
Thank you, trustee Stona. As a practice I started a couple of months ago, we're going to call on each committee and just to see if they have a report to give. Policy review, Chair Saldivar. Okay, thank you. Chancellor Goals and Evaluation, Chair Maria.
Not this month. I will report next month.
Yes, sir. Thank you very much. Grievance Committee, Chairman, Chair Woman Wilson. Okay, thank you. Committee on Committees, Chair Kane. Okay, thank you. Committee Engagement, Chair Mesa.
No updates at this time.
Thank you. Technology just reported. Audit and Finance, which is under me, is trying to schedule a meeting right now. We'll now move to committee charges. It's something that we started working with the administration on, creating a charge for each committee, both ad hoc and standing. Mr. Crawl has the latest work product that has. been reviewed by legal, by the administration, and is now being passed out to each trustee. So each trustee will have a charge of all the committee charges being released today. There are a couple still in progress. Thank you. So you might remember that we did Technology Committee previously, so that one's done. Included in the packet today is Community Engagement Committee Charge. Trustee Mesa, that'll be yours. Of course, Grievance Committee Charge, that's Chair Wilson. Policy Review Committee, Committee Chair Saldivar. And Committees on Committee, excuse me, Committee on Committees Committee Charge. That sounds funny. Trustee Kane. So when you have time, please review these and reach out to either the administration or me for any questions or assistance. And also be mindful that every committee has a staff resource assigned to it. And if you don't remember who that is, Mr. Crawl or Ms. Barnett will provide that information to you. But I'm excited about the committee charges because I think they're going to give us a sense of direction and priorities that need to be addressed as opposed to trying to come up with something to work on. So appreciate everyone's indulgence on that. Next item is consideration of the, well, before I do that, any questions? Okay, good. Thank you. None. Consideration of the Consent Agenda. We'll now move forward with consideration of our consent agenda. Are there any items that need to be pulled for discussion and separate consideration? I'll start on my left. Trustee Maria, trustee Kane.
Item 22.
Item 22 will be pulled. Trustee Kane. Thank you, trustee Kane. Trustee Mesa.
No, sir.
Thank you. Trustee Saldivar. Thank you. Trustee Stoma.
I have none.
Okay, thank you. Trustee Broussard. Thank you. Trustee Wilson. Thank you. And Chancellor, I'm gonna pull item 28, so the administration can address it. All right. The following items have been pulled from the Consent Agenda for separate consideration, item 22 and item 28. So may I have a motion for items 1 through 21 and 23 through 27? Trustee Wilson motion, may I have a second? Trustee Saldivar, a second. Any discussion? If not, I'll do a roll call vote on the items called. Trustee Saldivar. Thank you. Trustee Wilson. Thank you. Trustee Broussard. Thank you. Trustee Stoma.
Aye.
Thank you. Trustee Mesa.
Yes.
Thank you. Trustee Maria. Thank you. Trustee vote absent. Trustee Kane.
Yes.
Thank you. And I vote yes as well. The item passes. We'll now pull item number 22. Could I have a motion for item 22? Trustee Wilson, thank you. Do you have a second? Trustee Maria, thank you. And trustee Kane, item 22 is yours, sir.
Thank you. In going through the agenda, item 22 really jumped out at me. That's the Puente Project, and it's about expanding the Puente Project, which I think is just a great idea. This is a project that is in collaboration with UC Berkeley. Its focus is on providing enhanced services to educationally underrepresented students, many of whom also are economically disadvantaged students. It seeks to level the playing field for these students, which is a great thing. It benefits those students, and in a larger sense, it benefits everyone. And so I'm just totally in support of this program and wanted to see if there was additional information that we could, through the chancellor's office, gain from that, from that item.
Thank you. Any comments?
Dr. Wright, will you come up here, please?
Good morning, trustees. We are very excited and want to thank you for the support of the Puente Program. We are in the process now of expanding. University Park's on board now. We have two campuses. And it's worked very well. To tell you what this is about, it's a program that takes an academic, advising, and mentoring model, and the focus is upon first-time and college students with specific focus on first-generation students. We like it because, as you know, one of our G2 goals is retention of first-year students. And so this is a model that helps our faculty and our staff to know how to connect. And so there's a couple of ways, and there's three different ways in which it supports us too. There's one, there's a general cohort, and these students come through together, take a certain courses, like all your English, your speech, your psychology, your arts courses, and they work together. There's another model in which, like for instance, at Houston North, we have a mentoring model of all first-time and college students. And so the faculty go through and they're trained on techniques to deal with first-generation college students. That alone is about 750 students. And then there are several faculty members who just become certified just for the purpose of teaching their classes. And to tell you the type of impact that we've had, over the past four years, we now have about 44 faculty and staff members that are certified and have gone through the training. And to tell you a little bit about just the success of it, the cohorts over the past three years have all had over 90% course success rates, meaning A, B, or C's in courses. And to put that in perspective, that's about 12% higher this past year than our overall system average. And that's with, once again, first-time in college, first-generation, underrepresented students. And it's all about focusing upon bringing the backgrounds of the students into the classroom, where they matter, with everything that they're bringing to it. The content helps the faculty relate to it, their advisors be able to relate to them. So it's been a highly, highly successful program, and I just want to end with this point. It's not an administrator-driven program. It's a faculty-driven program. I could tell you, some of the first trainings, the faculty got together, asked for some funding, and they went through this training themselves. We just kind of jumped on the back end and said, hey, if you support it, we support it too. And so I want to commend the faculty for keeping it alive all this time and look forward to it continuing to help our G2 goals.
Good, trustee Kane? Good. Thank you very much. Thank you, Dr. Wright. Any other comments or questions on 22? No, I'll do a roll call vote. Trustee Saldivar. Thank you. Trustee Wilson. Thank you. Trustee Broussard. Thank you. Trustee Stoma.
Aye.
Thank you. Trustee Mesa.
Aye.
Thank you. Trustee Maria.
Aye.
Thank you. Trustee vote is absent. Trustee Kane.
Yes.
Thank you. Trustee Kane, and I vote yes. The item passes. Next is item number 28. May I have a motion for item 28? Trustee Wilson, thank you. May I have a second? Trustee Saldivar, for the second. Thank you. Let's see, the administration wanted to comment on this item.
Yes, thank you, Chair. So like I said earlier, this is an FTC application on behalf of Foxconn, which is a major manufacturer, actually, it's, I think, pretty much the manufacturer of iPhones, iPads, and a whole set of different products or different companies, but primarily the one that we've been working with is Apple. So most of you have read and heard about sort of this massive investment that Apple, along with the Trump administration, are making into chip manufacturing, server manufacturing, and really sort of trying to bring manufacturing back in a big scale to the United States, and particularly Texas. And it just so happens that the site location for these new proposed factories happen to be in our service area over in our Fallbrook neighborhood is where these are going to be built. And they are moving at lightning speed. We met, we've met now twice with both the leaders of sort of what I'll call, what I will call System Office Foxconn. And then we also met with sort of the specific center of Foxconn leaders here recently. And they, if I understood them correctly, they have to be up and running in production essentially by the spring. By late spring, they have to get going. And so they came to me and they said, can we push up this FTC application? It was originally supposed to be in September. We pushed it to August because we want to help them get going as quickly as possible because what it means for us, as I said earlier, they're projecting at the very least to start 2,500 jobs. And these are very sort of well-paying jobs because one of the things that I've learned in meeting with them is a lot of our jobs in manufacturing went abroad when labor was cheaper abroad. But one of the dynamics that's happening now is that cheap labor abroad is being replaced by robots. And so now they need somebody to essentially program the robots, to engineer the robots, and that's where sort of the local aspect of it comes. And I committed to bring it to the board with my full endorsement, urging you to adopt it because we believe it's the beginning of a great partnership. Mr. Collins is back there, as I mentioned earlier, on behalf of Apple. And they've been, they've shown a lot of energy that I have not seen in quite some bit from an employer that's willing to partner with us to provide exactly what we're here to do, provide better jobs, family sustaining wages to our students. And so again, I urge you without reservation to please adopt action item number 28 because I think it's the beginning of something that's gonna be really special and unique at Lone Star College for our students.
Thank you, Chancellor. And to those of the audience with Foxconn or the contractors, please know how much we appreciate this. Chancellor, if you covered this earlier, I apologize, but pilot, of course, stands for payment in lieu of taxes.
Yes, sir.
And then there's also no net tax revenue loss to the system.
Correct. And Dr. Bian and Ms. Molina are prepared to sort of speak about the legal aspect of it and the finance of it. But essentially, it's an offset. They pay, they still pay what we would get, so we're not letting them off the hook for the money. But the way the money is paid affects considerations for them that really don't affect us. And so that's part of the reason that for us, it's essentially a neutral thing. And especially when they've committed to be partners in hiring our students, it's a net win for us to move forward.
Extraordinary item. Any questions from board members down this side? Questions, comments? No, thank you. This side? Okay. Trustee Mesa.
I wanted to ask because I know we're entering an agreement, which is the pilot agreement, and then they also have the FTZ, the Foreign Trade Zone application. How long does this last for? Is this something that we have to agree to again or renew certain periods of time?
It is a pilot, which means we can jump off at some point, but I'm sorry. Yes. Let me restart. The pilot doesn't mean that, but yes, there is a point of essentially where we can pull it back, is my understanding.
Sorry.
Yes.
The designation would only be for a certain amount of time, and then they could reapply for it, but it's a limited amount of time.
Thank you. Sorry to speak over you, Chancellor.
It's okay. It is both a capital P pilot and a lowercase pilot.
Great. Thank you. Not to be confused with copilot from Microside. Okay. Any other comments? No, we'll do a roll call vote. Trustee Saldivar.
Yes.
Thank you. Trustee Wilson. Thank you. Trustee Broussard. Thank you. Trustee Stoma.
Aye.
Thank you. Trustee Mesa.
Yes.
Thank you. Trustee Maria.
Aye.
Thank you. Trustee vote absent. Trustee Kane.
Yes.
Thank you. Sullivan votes yes. The item passes. Financial report, do we do that? Do we come up? Yes, ma'am. Thank you. We now move to financial report. Dr. Bian will come up for round two today.
Yes, sir. You get to hear from me again. Apologies. So these are the financial statements, just as a reminder to the board for month ending June 30. So when you're looking at actual revenues, you can see that state appropriations specifically are tracking down from where they were in FY '24, and that was specifically because the state's payment was delayed to us beyond the June payment when it was expected. We didn't actually receive that until July. So even though it's recognized there through June 30, we have actually now received the final payment, but it was not recognized in June. So I do want to point out that one differential for you. So in June, the check was in the mail. We did actually finally receive both payments from the state to make us whole for state appropriations. When you're looking at expenditures through month end of the 30th, again, we are tracking pretty well where we have been this previous time last year. We have $345 million in total expenditures of a $513 million budget through month end of June. So again, as you look at that, we are still ahead in revenue. We're at 97.8% of the budget now with receiving the state payment. We actually have exceeded that. And again, we'll report more on that next month, so you can see those actual figures. So 97.8% though in budgeted revenue had been received through June 30. And then when you're looking at expenditures, we're actually tracking a little down in expenditures, which means we did not spend, we spent actually less so far this year compared to the same point in a previous year. So out of the $513 million budget, we had not, we've only spent 70.3% of that thus far. So we continue to monitor that and look at that in terms of budget authority remaining. So when you're looking at your financial statement, I do want to highlight a couple of variances. Many of these I've talked about in the budget presentation that they've now been recognized for FY '26 adjustments for the budget. But when you're looking at the variance, you can see $3.4 million variance in tuition. That is to the positive, which means we've received more in, or we anticipate we will receive more in tuition fees than what we budgeted for, and to the tune of about $3.4 million. So again, we did recognize that moving forward for this year's budget. State appropriations, there was a delta of 168. That was simply a timing between the file and the final actual run that they did. So again, to our betterment of 168. Taxes, we've received 8.5 million, or anticipate that we will receive 8.5 million more than anticipated. And then again, investments, 4.4. So again, you heard me speak about investments and recognizing that as actual revenue. You can see why we want to recognize that. It's consistently been recognized the last two years as received. And so we have a delta of about $26 million more this year in revenue than what was budgeted. So all to the betterment of the system. So always good news to report. When you're looking at the financial statements and the expenditures, to date, there's no significant variances to report, which just means everything's lining out the way that we anticipated. Again, only spending about 70.3% of the expenditure budget to this point in month 10 of a 12-month cycle. In looking at your board binders, you do have additional documents, including the balance sheets, investments, quarterly reports in your documents. And then when you're looking at cash reserves, again, just to remind everyone, this stays static because it is looking only by definition at a singular point in year. And so for FY '25, we have 169 in reserves. We do anticipate that growing for next year, taking into account the additional $26 million that was received beyond what was budgeted. And again, to remind the board that this does not include capital projects or the ERP set aside. So we do anticipate this growing to around $188 million at a minimum for next year. Any questions from the chair or the board?
Any trustees? Trustee Mesa?
Dr. Bian, I have a quick question. So going back to the increased revenue from tuition, and it's closer to 3.5, right, the million? Do we know
Yeah.
where that came from?
Yes, absolutely. So great question, sir. So really, when we have budgeted, and the chancellor, you've heard him speak about it, our focus has really been on student outcomes and student success. We've taken away the focus on growth. So both last year and in this year's budget, we're not projecting growth. So we budgeted flat that last year. We're budgeting flat again this year. And so that was actually recognizing growth that we did receive that we did not budget for because we can only actually count for what we put in the budget. So we received additional 3.4, almost $3.5 million in revenue based on growth. This year, we recognize that growth. So again, we're not budgeting for growth this year. We're just taking the fact that if we stay flat from what we've grown, that will be what the budget. So if we continue to grow this year, which we anticipate, we hope we would like to. But again, the focus is on student graduation and success. Then you would also see that variance because it's recognizing the growth that we didn't put in the budget.
Of course. Okay.
Is that helpful?
No, definitely. And I know the focus is on retention and of course, keeping the students coming back and getting them to graduate. But we can't stop students from enrolling, and you know, they want to enroll, so that's great. So.
Yes, sir. And so just to offer an operational sort of perspective for that, what, it goes back to the same dynamic that I talked about during the budget meeting. If you budget growth, then it gets allocated and you, you forecast it. And so what happened for, the way it used to work is we would budget growth, and then when the growth did not happen, then you had to pull back. And so people felt like budget was being cut. And it wasn't that budget was being cut. It's the growth estimates weren't what we had budget, hard-baked essentially into the budget. And so just like HB8 money now with enrollments, if we say that we're not focused on enrollments, but we budget based on increased enrollments, then the budget doesn't align with what we're saying. And culturally, there's a mismatch between the budget and our strategy, right? And so the strategy is very much, if we grow, that's great. When we get the money, we will recognize it and then we will spend it, but we don't need to build a budget, in my opinion, that says we're going to grow X, Y, and Z. Um, so it has nothing to do with sort of turning people away at the door or students. It has to do with, are we counting on that money? And are we counting it in a way that if it doesn't come true, we're going to have to peel back things just like HB8? So it's not just an HB8 strategy. It's a tax rate strategy. It's a student tuition strategy where fundamentally, just back to basics, don't spend money you don't have until you have it. And that's fundamentally what, what we're doing across all income streams. Thank you.
Thank you, trustee Mesa. Chancellor, any comments, questions, financial report? Thank you very much, Dr. Vian.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. And before we go into closed session, I apologize, I missed part of the meeting earlier today. So I do want to do two things. I want to thank Vice Chair Saldivar for stepping in and running both the budget workshop and the meeting. So thank you. Uh, second, I missed making some comments about activities, so if you can just bear with me a second. It's been a, a very active month as we embark on our community events. I appreciate what everyone here at the board table wants to accomplish, the good they want to do, and the engagement that results from everyone working together. With this said, I want to publicly thank Dr. Melissa Gonzalez and her team at Lone Star College, Kingwood. She conducted her inaugural state of LSC Kingwood recently. The event highlighted the many activities and programs offered and included not just the main campus, but the centers as well. The audience was attentive, and I could feel the energy and interest in the ring. Afterwards, many guests stayed to mingle, ask questions, and tour. I want to thank trustees Wilson and Broussard for attending the event. It was great to have you all there. Next item is to recognize Lone Star College Foundation. Earlier this week, coincidentally, Lone Star College, Kingwood, they held a ceremony dedicating a fire pavilion to someone who had lost their life fighting a fire. The foundation was recognizing the Staley family for their endowment and contributions in honor of their son, Gary Staley, who lost his life fighting a fire. Gary was a volunteer fire department with the Porter Volunteer Fire Department. He was a foundation, this was a foundation event. It would not have been possible without the generosity of the Staley family. As such, Nicole Gautier was the MC and coordinated the event with the Lone Star College team. I want to take a minute to accomplish, to acknowledge the work that Ms. Gautier does. She's a consummate professional, always promoting the foundation and the work that it does. In closing, I want to thank trustees Wilson and Kane for attending that event as well. We'll now move into closed session. The Board of Trustees. In accordance with the Texas Open Meetings Act, we'll move into closed session under one or more of the following provisions. Section 551.071, section 551.072, section 551.074, and section 551.076. We'll now move into closed session at 11:43 AM. I reconvene this board meeting at 1:43 PM. Are there any suggested future agenda items? Looking to my right, any future items? No. Looking to my left, any future items? Trustee Mesa.
Whenever we went, uh, to DC, a few of us, um, I had encountered some community colleges that, um, and I would look into how to put this in policy or what their, uh, process is, but they have student trustees and at least one student trustee. And so, uh, going back to the, um, goals of the college as far as community engagement, uh, listening to our students, giving them a seat at the table. Uh, I would like to see something, uh, next month on the agenda if necessary. Uh, if not, then I, but I would either way like to see, uh, us starting a student trustee program. Uh, and if it has to be put on the agenda for board approval, I would like to see that. And if not, then, and we can still do it, then, uh, however, we can get it done. But that's my proposal.
Okay, let's give the administration whatever time they need.
Of course.
One month. Let's, if they need a month or two, let's.
Sure, of course.
We're getting ready to start the fall semester, so, and budget. And probably more I don't know about, but good idea, and we'll certainly do it.
Thank you.
Yes, sir, of course. Trustee Saldivar, anything? Okay, good, good. Thank you. With no further business to discuss, this board meeting is now adjourned at 1:45 PM.